First up will be Charles Kane of Woodford.
Good evening. On September 24, 2019, I was issued an invalid criminal trespass warning when advocating for my son's education, which was ordered to be given to me by Susan Bone. My attorney and I requested that Susan Bone drop the illegal criminal trespass warning in the ISD to pay for attorney fees in an amount of approximately $1,700. Instead of dropping the invalid criminal trespass warning, Susan Bone and certain board members still on the school board refused, which resulted in a lawsuit. Multiple grievances were filed on Bone during the lawsuit, and Bone would not hear the grievances as she passed them down to Lynn McKinnney. McKinnney would not go against Susan Bone, and she most likely didn't have the authority to rule against Susan Bone, being that Susan Bone was her superior. The lawsuit resulted, or the lawsuit cost ISD close at $500,000, whenever it could have been settled for $1,700. According to Forrest Collins, the ISD's insurance company encouraged you guys to settle the lawsuit, at which point they encourage you guys to settle the lawsuit is unknown. But I can only guess it was before you guys appealed to the higher court, being that Forrest Collins keeps deleting my comments on his public social media page. It is apparent based on all the complaints after my lawsuit that Susan Bone and the school board continues to take a non-collaborative approach to issues that arise in a district when parents get involved to advocate for their children. Thank you.
Serena Reyes of Wood Park.
All right, good evening. Just a little backstory real quick. My name's Serena Reyes, have four kids here at Alito ISD. They're all at Walsh, and I have one in FA, and then all of my kids receive speech services of some sort. I just wanted to give a positive experience that we've had. Well, we've had our ups and downs, with our special education team has always had our daughter's and our kids' best interest in mind, and I just wanted to give a few examples. Some of our examples are, it's my daughter Alice's kinder gardener speech therapist making sure our goals align, and it's her, sorry, it's our daughter's goals aligning with us when it was our first year here. It's her never meeting my autistic daughter but making her a choice board just because I have randomly mentioned it in a phone call. It's my son's pals instructor working so hard with him and also ensuring that he gets the right amount of speech services going into kindergarten. That was something we were super concerned about. It's my autistic daughter's first year of kindergarten, her whole FA team working so hard with her, and us accomplishing goals I never thought would happen. It's her whole team and our principal overjoyed with emotion at watching her participate in her kindergarten graduation and participating the whole time. We have had some challenges at the beginning of the year, but our teachers have worked so, so hard with her. One of the biggest examples I can show you is, when we first started at Walsh, we had taken her to an eye doctor's appointment, and she had completely melted down. Me and my husband had never seen behaviors like that. And so we went back, talked with our occupational therapists, our speech therapists, our teachers. They came up with a plan, we worked really hard, and we just went to the eye doctor last week. She walked in, didn't need any prompts, sat there, even our eye doctor was like, who is this kid? She was able to match certain items, didn't even know she could do that. She even was able to match her days of the week. I left that, I left that appointment stunned and in tears because I did not think that we could make that much progress in such a short amount of time. Our sped team have worked so, so hard for all of our kids, and I just wanted to show, I just wanted to tell a positive experience with our Alito Special Education Team. Thank you.
Brandon Hall.
Good evening, board members. I just want to begin by thanking our incredible teachers who serve our students so well. My name is Brandon Hall. I serve on the State Board of Education, and I represent the Alito ISD community on the Texas State Board of Education. I was compelled to get involved in public education because I felt like parents were not being heard enough, and I wanted to be a voice for them. And so that's exactly what I'm here to do today. And of course, parents are the primary stakeholders in their child's education. No one knows better than parents what their child needs and how to serve them best. Recently, numerous parents from the Special Education Department here in Alito ISD have reached out to me for help. Also numerous teachers and other employees in the district have reached out to me voicing concerns that are consistent with the sped parents who have reached out. And so I'm here tonight to speak out on behalf of these parents and teachers. The concerns about leadership in the Special Education Department cannot be ignored any longer. And I know that it's not your intention to ignore them, and certainly not my intention to ignore them, but even if for some reason it was someone's intention to ignore the situation, it's become impossible at this point when you have headlines in the Fort Worth Star Telegram, and then even of course, when you see one student's case brought all the way up to the President of the United States at the State of the Union, and that same student's family shares with me that they don't feel seen and heard by this board and by this district. And so it is an issue that's getting a lot of attention right now, and of course, Alito ISD has an incredible reputation, you have an incredible legacy for serving students very, very well. And so obviously, as a, as board members, it is your job to preserve this legacy, to continue it, and to preserve the reputation of Alito ISD, but you do this obviously by addressing these concerns of the parents and making sure that we are serving our most vulnerable students with the highest levels and standards of excellence, and that those parents are involved in every single step of that process. Alito ISD, again, I'm asking you to sit down with every single one of the parents who have reached out, to hear their concerns, and to take action to exercise your role of oversight and accountability over administrative leadership that has been entrusted to you by the community. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Hall is our state board vacation member. Before you leave, would you leave your contact information with the spring nurse?
Of course.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mary Kate Parmenter.
Good evening. My name is Mary Kate Parmenter. I'm 13 and a seventh grade student at Alito Middle School. My brother has been regressing a significant amount this year. Despite my parents raising concern to this issue, they've been told that it is normal for a child at his age to be regressing. But this is simply not true. When I found out that my parents were told this, I was extremely concerned for my brother's education. When I researched, when I researched the problem, there was no evidence to back this up. Also, if a typical child such as I regressed by 50%, there would be a lot of extra steps taken to help me, such as tutoring, extra work, teachers helping, et cetera. This is not the case for my brother. He was told that it is normal or to be expected, but in reality, that is not the case at all. Since when should students not be cared about just because of a disability? I'd like to ask you board members, what would happen if I regressed this much, and why aren't these procedures being implemented for my brother? Please give them a chance, they deserve it.
Heather Parmenter of Alito.
Good evening. My name is Heather Parmenter, and six months ago to the day, my son was assaulted in the functional academics room at Alito ISD. Here's a picture of his head wound, and I had warned the campus administrator the previous Friday that he had been complaining about a classmate hitting him. An investigation found absolutely nothing, but the following Monday, it was less than two hours that he'd been returned to school, I was informed that he was pushed in class and had a head injury. Although Alito ISD maintains that he was pushed, the children in the classroom tell a very, very different tale. In fact, I've asked for clarification from administration and even two different police chiefs, only to be absolutely ignored. I kept Bo out of school for several days until cameras were installed in the special education classrooms, but it doesn't matter. Another incident occurred in January. I've now been denied seeing the footage for months, and wasn't even notified until several hours later at pickup that he had tried to leave school. After Bo's injury, the district flat out refused to even reimburse a $40 copay for my son's doctor visit, but was very, very generous with the Walsh Gallegos legal team, and brought an attorney into every IEP meeting we've had ever since there, presumably at a district cost of several hundred dollars per hour, all to minimize the rights of a child with a disability who did nothing more than attend school. Bo was now traumatized from the incident and is permanently scarred on his head. Despite all this, we've been trying to meet and work with the district. Over the last two months, well, what happened in February, the Alito ISD and staff, they offered up nothing at mediation. In fact, the TEA mediator specifically suggested that we either move or experience homeschooling instead of staying with Alito ISD. I've met with a very high ranking member of the board to clear the air, and although I thought we'd been enjoying a productive conversation, and even discussed how I can be an advocate and an ambassador for Alito, it was at the end of the evening that he looked me square in the eye to say that Bo would soon be regressing because he was 11, and quotes, "Some physicality in the classroom is to be expected." Yes, even after the horrors that we've seen in Plano, and Conroe, and right up the street in Millsap, our most vulnerable children should be victims of violence simply because they have a disability. This will undoubtedly be spun that we are anti-teacher and anti-Alito. Nothing could be further from the truth. We have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, some of us millions, into being part of this community. Not only that, it's painfully obvious to the children that you don't believe in them. They know it, we know it, and sadly enough, the typical peers that they dream of working for one day are seat getting a front row seat to all of us. Thank you for your time.
John Turner of Alito.
I spoke in November to share concerns I had with special education. I am here to provide an update. This year's issues do not negate that my son's first five years in the district were incredible. While the district does an excellent job of communicating overall and has leaders who demonstrate commitment to transparency and community empowerment, I was disappointed and voiced concerns with the sped consolidation and how it was announced last April. Dr. Bone was responsive. She created a committee where other sped parents and I have been working with teachers and staff to create resources, improve communication, and strengthen the district's understanding of the needs of the sped community. I reached out to several board members regarding concerns. Forrest Collins and Zach Tarrant took time on numerous occasions to listen, ask questions, and follow up. Through the support and active collaboration of Mr. Collins and the facilitation of Dr. Bone, there was a change of teachers and improved daily communication. This spring has been a significantly better experience with substantial improvement in student behavior and classroom management. My son is happy to go to school again. There remains work to be done. I appreciate the appropriate channels that exist for communication and collaboration with the district. I will continue to utilize these to share feedback, positive and constructive as necessary. I implore you to hire appropriately placed and retain quality teachers. This is challenging in light of inconsistent state funding, inflation, and the demands of working in sped. I am concerned that the district's ability to retain and attract quality teachers will be compromised by the incessant PR stunts of a few bad actors. These selfish broadcasts jeopardize the well-being of all existing and future bear cats with special needs. Improvements can occur when people are flexible, receptive to feedback, and willing to act for the benefit of the child. Mr. Collins and Dr. Bone have demonstrated this. I would, it would have been easier to wait until the summer to make a change in my son's classroom. They took the initiative to act sooner. Problems multiply when people on each side of the table react out of fear, spite, or become inflexible and uncompromising. I have known Mr. Collins and the other board members, Dr. Bone, and many campus level personnel long enough to believe that they truly care for our differently abled kids and want to see them thrive. Every decision is not perfect, but let he or she who is without sin cast the first stone. I believe they have learned from this year that greatness doesn't happen by accident and must be continually and intentionally sought, and that sped students deserve not only to be cared for, but to be encouraged and expected to push the boundaries of their potential. The district addressed a number of my concerns, and I trust these leaders and the motivations of their actions.
John Roach of Alito.
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to me this evening. My name's John Roach. I've been in Alito for almost 13 years, and we moved here in part because we wanted to raise our kids from here. We moved here from Wyoming, we did our search on the internet, this is where we wanted to be. We are committed to Alito. Let me say that first and foremost. Now then, we do believe that God led us to our neighborhood, to our, this community. And a part of that is, we had two kids, we had moved here, and since moving here, Ben was born. That's what I'm here for today, is to advocate for Ben. Now then, one thing I will say is that y'all have asked for parent engagement, and you've got engagement. It may not necessarily be the group you thought would be here, but we are here. Ben is the son of our family, has Down Syndrome. We enrolled him at Kinnerfrogs very early on. We didn't even know if we'd still be here because my family and I have moved more times than military. I'm in Oldfield. It's a challenge I take with acquaintances to compare. What I want to make here is that we are committed, and of course, our journey here, I feel like is led by God. And I say that because, as I started to say, we enrolled at Kinnerfrogs, and when we went to meet with them, they wanted to know where we were gonna go to after Kinnerfrogs, and we told them Stewart Elementary, and we said, that is the number two school of all the kids, or all the schools that our kids leave here and go to. So we felt like we had done what God asked us to do. Now then, I will say, it's not quite what it used to be, and I hate to say that, but it's not all negative. Let me start with some positives. First and foremost, I am happy to say that our son Ben is General Ed teacher Mrs. Sorce, who received an award today. She's done a lot to go out of her way to include him in the general ed classroom. Now then, you know, that is only so much because Jen, sorry, Ben needs special ed. And so he has matured, he has a better attitude, and the teachers call him a leader in his school. He's one's student of the month, he's done very well. My time is getting short and I'm going with his role. He's become more independent, and he's become more verbal, that's his biggest holdup. And because of that, he gets held back in other ways. There are things that still need improvement though, and that's what I want to say is that we do need cameras in the classroom. As we know, it's important for not just the kids, but also the teachers. Also too, there needs to be FA at all campuses. It's too much on the administration to try and hold 20 R meetings at a time. It's too much. Stability in the teacher position, that's first and foremost. That's where the most challenge is gonna come for our kids that need special needs. In our experience at Alito, it's generally positive, but we need academic standards to be higher for our kids. Thank you very much.
Courtney Maury of Alito.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Maury, and my daughter Annie has a genetically derived disability, Down Syndrome. All three-year-olds in Texas with Down Syndrome have a lawful right to education and therapies by their school district. Your expert in testing disabilities, your diagnostician, told me that the best type of cognitive test for my child and what she planned to give her was a play-based test because it was appropriate, appropriate, appropriate for toddlers. This is what we wanted for Annie, we were in agreement. Director of Special Education Margaret Bloodworth and Superintendent Bone did not like me being an informed parent and having a say in which tests Annie would get. They overrode what the expert diagnostician and I agreed on, and said, no, this child must be IQ tested. Three-years-old and other, three-year-olds in other school districts do not and practically cannot take this type of test. It requires verbal answers. It is not age-appropriate and would surely yield an artificially low score. After months of wasted time where Annie did not get her precious therapies, we were told, quote, "We cannot simply determine if your daughter has a disability without this IQ test." And we were sent a letter in the mail that dismissed her from the district. Annie has Down Syndrome. Everyone in this room knows she has a disability and that she qualifies for special education. You forced us into litigation just to have the opportunity to have a voice for our daughter because all this superintendent knows is litigation. You cared more about maintaining power than doing what is in the best interest for your student. There is a strategy here from my vantage point. Why is Alito so hung up on this IQ test? Code these students as severely disabled as possible, collect the most funding for them. This is called segregation. All the students with any type of disability in this class, away from their typical peers. It costs a lot less because now you don't have to spend the extra money to pay the carers or to support them in general education. Get the most, spend the least. You don't even want to give students like my daughter a chance at kindergarten. This is violation of IDEA law that states that all students must given the opportunity to begin their education placement in the least restrictive environment. So, you're gonna do this to my child and honestly worse to so many sitting out here right now and have the nerve to launch this newly found interest in the students with disabilities. This new PR campaign that suddenly spotlights and praises children in special education that's all over online, now that you're in the media's eye, it seems very disingenuous. Our family spent $25,000 in due process, and if not for this law firm that took on Angus Case pro bono, it would be hundreds of thousands at this point. Thank you.
Katie Rivera of Alito.
Hi, my name is Katie Rivera. I'm gonna go off script just a little bit here. I'm not a person of conflict. I don't like conflict, it makes me very uncomfortable, but I needed to look each of you in the eyes again and say, guys, this is really a problem. It's really a problem. My son has Down Syndrome. It was denied access to a free and appropriate public education within Alito ISD, simply because we as his parents exercised our rights to informed consent and equal IEP, and as equal IEP team members. Despite qualifying under federal guidelines of IDEA and another state, and being identified as a child in need of services, Alito claimed that they could not determine if he was an eligible individual in need of services. This was a perplexing response, as his eligibility had already been clearly established under federal law. We are not in denial that Cal has a disability, he has Down Syndrome. And it is worth noting that we were happy, I'll say it one more time, we were happy to comply with cognitive testing and cognitive evaluations. What we were not happy to comply with was inappropriate diagnostic evaluations for our son. It wasn't until we hired an attorney that the district reversed course. Only then did Alito acknowledge our son's rights to public education. Throughout this process, we made every effort to collaborate and educate the district about informed consent, particularly appearance rights, to decline specific assessments, including IQ tests. Unfortunately, the district, the district repeated the same actions not once, but twice after our son, and this revealed a much larger issue at hand within Special Education Department. In December of 2023, I met with Dr. Bone and presented a detailed binder of documentation including letters from concerned parents, specific concerns regarding how Dr. Bloodworth was handling special education, and emails from parents who experienced leadership under Dr. Bloodworth in another district. Mr. Collins also received a copy of this binder. Many families who have raised their voices have been belittled, dismissed, and even vilified by current administration and by some current trustees. We are not here to tear down this district. I did not move my family across the country to tear down this district. We moved here because it was supposed to be the best for my son. We are here because we are desperate for change. After exhausting every other avenue, we are left with no choice but to speak publicly. What we are asking for is reasonable, it's to honor the rights of our children, rights guaranteed to them under federal law. We are speaking up not just for our children, but for every child in this district who deserves to be seen, heard, and served appropriately. Thank you.
Jackson Mahoney of Grapevine.
We're supposed to go in another order? My name is Dassin. My name is Dassin. I am a third grade. My favorite is second. This is science. I like to learn with my friends. I like, I do cheer, dance, and my colleague, when I grow up, I want to be a work and a doctor, a pearl to help, help kids get better. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elston Berry. I am here joined with my friends Carson Evans, Leighton Bratcher, and Hadley Burden. We are four of the eight victims of the malicious crime of AI deep fakes that occurred here at this high school. I am currently a sophomore at Alito High School, along with Leighton, but Carson and Hadley left Alito due to the lack of protection plate. We were attacked online and exploited sexually all over social media. Another student, a classmate, made AI nudes not only me, but eight other girls. Our freshman year at this high school was completely ruined. You, the school board, failed to protect us as students due to the lack of verbiage in the student code of conduct that addressed AI. Alito High School, the Alito High School student that did this was not held accountable, and he was protected throughout this whole situation. There was bullying and harassment rules with consequences of permanent suspension, but with my case, none of them applied. I was never worried about my safety until this situation, and he not only harassed me, but eight other girls. He threatened the school by saying phrases, "I wanna go out with a bang." And while expressing my fear, your reaction was, "Oh, it's fine, and the girls are still needing to attend school." The lack of protection from the school has now created fear and worry, and it will happen again, it is just a matter of time. I have been working with the Texas Senator Ted Cruz to create the Take It Down Act. This legislation holds the perpetrator accountable by making AI deep fakes a felony with jail time, and also requires Big Tech to take down the images within 48 hours. We are needing to be proactive instead of re-act. We are needing to be proactive instead of reactive in order to prevent this from happening. I am currently working with third grade, third grade Bearcats and it breaks my heart to imagine any of those students undergoing a similar experience and having to deal with the pain and trauma this has caused me. So, the reason I am here today is to urge you to implement AI curriculum in order to train students, faculty, and staff on what it is and what to do and the consequences. Do not disappoint us. Thank you.
Jack Hudson of Alito.
Hello, my name is Jack Hudson. I'm a resident of Alito ISD. I have three kids within the school district. I'm here to thank you guys for the experiences that Alito ISD and their faculty do every day to support my children and everybody's children out there. They put in the time to create a, the best atmosphere that promotes a healthy learning experience for all the children within Alito to thrive in their life. I've been lucky to serve and volunteer with the, alongside different groups in the community with the ISD. It's been a blessing to help support many of these programs that are lacking. We are able to support those kinds of things within that. So, parents, residents, I encourage you, if you don't volunteer within your schools, if you don't volunteer within groups that support the ISD, I encourage you to do that. It will put a smile on your face as to what these people do day in and day out for your children. And I speak, my personal experience as a parent, watching my kids grow, but also on the other side of the volunteering aspect of it. It brings a lot of joy to me and my life to give back to what these people do for us. Again, thank you all for what you do. It makes a difference.
Carol Karen of Alito.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carol Karen. I spoke at the last board meeting and since August of this year, I've had concerns about the education of my child. I've had lots of conversations with staff from the campus level to district administrators. Special education has a lot of laws and some people make, want to make rocket science out of it. And it really doesn't have to be that complicated. The main idea of IDEA, which is the federal law, is that all kids are educated alongside their peers despite their disability. Now, we don't have to expect these kids to perform on the same grade level because they do have a disability. And this is where you guys can work with parents to decide on appropriate modifications and accommodations and work for what's best for the kids. Forrest, whenever you and I talked, you mentioned that special education is just so regulated. And as a board, you guys can't really do anything about special education. You told me to file a TEA complaint and I did. And then we got to agree to mediation. But instead of mediating, Margaret Bloodworth refused to talk about any of the issues. At the end of the TEA sponsored mediation, the mediator asked if we had thought about moving or homeschooling. So, clearly, working with parents was not happening. In the special education classrooms, parents can request a video camera. And there's actually one in my daughter's classroom. This is not a camera where parents can just monitor what goes on in the classroom every day, but it is there and parents can request to review the video footage. There have been a couple of times this year that there have been incidents and I've requested the video. Both of these requests have been denied. I also requested to review the hallway video and I was denied the first time and told I'd have to make a public information request, which I did. You guys sent an AG opinion letter to that request to solve it. And then several weeks later, you called to tell me that, oops, you had pulled the wrong video and now the actual video that I wanted has been rewritten. So, the second time that I asked to review some hallway video, the principal promptly let me come in and watch it. I asked her why this request was handled so differently and she told me she didn't really know and there's not really any policy around it. So, I don't understand why this is. I guess I would, I would ask you guys, why is this? Why would you routinely deny video requests of parents? And you have to know that it doesn't make parents feel good about sending their kids into a classroom where there's no access. The campus principal has shut down access to the campus and the classrooms. And then I get denied watching video when there's incidents that have been reported. I believe you guys as a board do have a lot of power and you have the power to drive change. And I would ask that you do this to help assist parents.
Teresa Loman of Alito. Teresa, I got it, I got it right this time, didn't I?
No, sir.
How do you say it? Teresa, I'm so sorry. Teresa.
Yes. My name is Teresa Loman. I, my son is Johan Summers. He's a senior here in Alito High School. And first, I just want to thank all of the wonderful teachers, coaches, the bus drivers, the nutritionists. You guys make a difference every day with our children. You, your dedication does not go unnoticed. I just want to thank you guys so much. Johan has had a great time at Alito through his education. But things started to change when Dr. Bloodworth, Dr. Bloodworth came aboard and that was his 10th grade year. Under the leadership of Dr. Bloodworth, it has constantly been challenged and in some cases outright denied essential services for these children. Speech therapy has been denied. Inclusive opportunities that were once firmly in place for students with disabilities. Inclusion has been stripped away from these voiceless. Students who were once fully integrated are now being isolated, segregated, removed from the educational classrooms and denied access to opportunities alongside their typical peers. Elementary students in the functional academics classes, you heard it already. They're being bused away from their neighborhood campuses. They're segregating these classmates from their own siblings that go to that school and their friendships that they've made in that neighborhood. The district has spent over $1 million over five years from taxpayer dollars that we put into the system on legal fees and settlements. Finding families rather than supporting our students. Despite these concerning patterns, these are patterns. The school board has not publicly or addressed the spending decisions. The silence signals urgent need for fresh leadership that is willing to ask hard questions and demand accountability. This is not just a failure of leadership. It's a misuse of public trust with our children and our money. These are our tax dollars and we deserve to know how they're being spent. We're calling for transparency and not legal strategy and political ambition. Alito is a community full of heart, tradition, and pride. Thank you.
Price Marshall of Alito.
It's a strange place to have Aggie Muster, but there's several of us here, so gig 'em. So, last week I attended the Realtor Breakfast. And honestly, I've lived in Alito for years. I've sold real estate all throughout Parker County. And people would ask me, why, you know, why should we move to Alito? And I wanted to come to this to learn talking points and growth points of the, of the ISD, right? It was great. Those students that were represented were phenomenal. Those kids have way more going on at this age than I did at 30-years-old. Absolutely amazing. But some key points that the district laid out, that Dr. Bone laid out for us. AISD is committed to ensuring high levels of learning for all students. Systems are in place to ensure every child receives additional time and support when they need it. Every student has unique needs and the, I'm sorry, instruction must be differentiated. Instructors work collaboratively to support the diverse needs of all learners. These are the kind of things that every parent wants to hear. I guess the kind of things I could sell on. The kind of messages that make you believe the district is striving for something greater. The problem is, it's just words. Because as a parent of a child with Down Syndrome, I can tell you, we're not living in this reality. These aren't goals, these aren't goals that are being met. There are promises being broken. The truth, for families like mine, these lofty commitments feel hollow. We're not seeing inclusion. We're not seeing equity. We're not seeing support. Instead, we're seeing the constant fight for services, for dignity, for the bare, I'm sorry, bare minimum of our kid deserves. I speak up because I refuse to let this continue quietly. I want those statements on the slide to be more than a performative PR. I want them to be real. I want to live in Alito that was, I want to live in the Alito that was described that morning, not just dream about it. Because no parent should have to wonder if their child will be treated as a burden. No family should feel like their child doesn't belong in their own neighborhood school. I want Alito where every child, regardless of ability, is supported, valued, and included. Where all students actually means all students. Where the system isn't designed to push out our most vulnerable to the margins, but lift them up. And I'll keep speaking until that day comes. Thank you.
Mark McAdams of Alito.
Hello, my name is Mark McAdams. I'm a retired fire captain of the University Fire Department in Dallas. I spent 10 of the 22 years of my position as an officer. I learned the value of leadership from some of the top officers in the country. Leadership isn't for the weak and the cowardly. A good leader, done right, will leave a legacy that'll last forever. Leadership is about responsibility and accountability. As superintendent and school board members, you have the responsibility to the students and parents. Just as the Texas Education State Agency states is a priority, it's your job to create a climate and culture of safety and health for students under your watch. That includes preventing bullying and harassment, stalking, sexual violence, et cetera. The hope is, if you let them know that they're safe with you and you had their backs, there will be a reduction of violence, bullying, and teen suicide. I wish just once I could take you with me on a call we make on a 13-year-old who decided to take his own life in his parents' bathroom on Thanksgiving because that was a better option for him than dealing with the bullying he was receiving at school. In his note I read, stated, "School officials knew and did nothing to help him." Funny, they said, "You should just avoid the bully." Funny, we were told that by school officials here too, with my daughter. It's now 2025 and in the last 15 months, my wife and daughter have been on a mission to make sure that what happened to her with AI crimes never happens to anybody again without consequences. In that time, we've met with numerous state and US senators. Every single one of them thought it was a pressing issue. Here at Alito High School, nothing. My wife and daughter are responsible for state lawmakers creating numerous House bills on this issue and are responsible for the creation of the Take It Down Act, which is now on the House forum and will be signed into federal law soon. Hundreds of man-hours, thousands of pages drafted because of this. Here at Alito High School, one sentence in your student code of conduct. In 15 months, a mom and a 15-year-old girl accomplished all of that. You, one sentence. It took 15 months and it wasn't until my daughter sat next to the First Lady at the State of the Union that all of a sudden Mrs. Bone wanted to have a meeting with us. Too late for that. Y'all had your chance to show the kids and the parents you were true leaders. From my experience here tonight, you have literally failed every demographic of student here. Minorities, special needs kids, my daughter, all the girls. I'm not here to talk to you about what I think you can do better. You had your chance, my time and my time here and you've proven time and again, you're not capable of good leadership. I'm here to say it's time to step down. You forgot. You worked for us. Mrs. Bone works for you. She failed at her position and so it's your job, responsibility to take care of that. So, now I hate it that I'm here thinking that I was just going to have to protect her from the prisoners at the prison. Now I realize I got to protect her from the wardens of the prison too.
Andrew McAdams of Alito.
I really wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but Mike Alcott asked me to read something to all of you. Representative Alcott strongly supports the efforts of the US Senator Ted Cruz and First Lady Melania Trump to prevent this from happening to anyone else in the future and prays that the Take It Down Act will pass promptly through Congress and will see President Trump's signature, which we do plan on that happening in the next couple of weeks. School administrators and school boards have the important responsibility to act promptly when a child is being harmed in school. Preventive measures such as training for students, teachers, and staff about the possible criminal consequences of using AI to harm another person should be required. Thank you.
Andrew Prichett of Alito.
Board members, fellow community. I just wanted to come here today to, to listen. I think that's important, to listen. I don't think enough people listen. Because we're all here together and we're all part of a community. These people are a part of our community. We're all human. And I think listening is a big part of what we all need to do. And being compassionate to each other is important as well because none of these jobs are easy. None of the jobs as parents of special needs. Children that have been harmed from cruel evil is difficult. I don't think anyone in this room wants any of this to happen, but this is part of our life. This is nothing that's been written down, what I thought about earlier. But listening to the community, I think that's what community is, is listening to one another, being compassionate to each other and understanding that this is a difficult life we all live. I came here 10 years ago because like all of us, we heard of Alito. We thought it was a great place to come and raise our families. And it is a great place to come and live our families or we'd leave. Let's be honest. It's a great place. We have great leaders. We have great neighbors. We have great teachers. We have great preachers. I volunteered my time and my coach, I left my team to come and be a part of this this evening. But I just wanted to say that. I want to say thank you. What I was going to say is my, my son, I've got three boys, been in the district for 10 years. One of my boys had a difficult time transitioning schools with the redistricting this year. But our counselors, both at Stewart and Aneta, have helped him transition. He's a healthy kid, but otherwise just missing his friends and doing normal things. But I wanted to say thank y'all for supporting them, having the things that he needed for the difficult time that was in his life, that is important to him at his juncture in his fourth grade year. It pales in comparison to some of the other things that happened. But that is life. We all fight through it and hopefully we all pick each other up instead of tearing each other down. And I think that's what we need to remember is not tearing each other down, but to help build us up. And that is growing greatness and that is leadership.
Marissa Mahoney of Greifline.
Good evening, President Collins and trustees. My name is Marissa Mahoney. I'm a resident from Southwick Carroll ISD. I'm here tonight to share my experience regarding Margaret Bloodworth and the impact she had on our family. Mrs. Bloodworth began working in Carolina State in the summer of 2021 for the 21-22 school year. We did not have a special education director, so she served as that over my son. Our story is impossible to tell quickly, but due to a lack of being uninformed of my son's need at the school, a violation, and a lack of appropriate special education training from a district level, my son was removed from the classroom in December of 2021 for blowing raspberry and placed isolated in a room in the form of a versed technique, denying his access to his IEP on December 17th of 2021. The reason this is important is because this was all under Margaret Bloodworth's leadership. My son was out of the classroom for an additional four weeks due to a lack of appropriate support not being made available. And a behavior plan was proposed where my son was being made to earn his way back into the classroom. After working with an amazing behavior coordinator the fall of the following year, I now know the strategy that Mrs. Bloodworth implemented was not the appropriate technique for supporting a child in a least restrictive environment. Valentine's Day was approaching that year, and in the email, Mrs. Bloodworth advises Jax would not be allowed to participate, and the parent attended Valentine party and parade. His IEP did not indicate he would be restricted from these types of events, and she also indicated his birthday would be celebrated in isolation away from his peers. Thankfully, we had a new special programs executive director that started on Valentine's Day of that year who resolved everything and upheld his rights. Although our director worked to undo all the damage Mrs. Bloodworth did, I still want justice for Jax and the precious educational time he lost that year. We went through the local grievance process that took nine months to be heard at a Level 3. Our school board and district cannot hold her accountable locally. By the time she resigned at my school district and applied at your district on April 20th, there was no opportunity to hold her accountable. She did not list any of the leadership at my district, nor did your district call any of them, which I looked through all open record requests for this. I called and I spoke with Dr. Bone early August to briefly share my experience and my fear for the community of Alito and the great schools. My friend also emailed President Collins on October 30th to share her Office of Civil Rights complaint. You employed her as an educator in the middle of multiple OCR investigations, local grievances, and TEA complaints. Upon Mrs. Bloodworth leaving, I found her resume not to be representative of her job functions. Examples how she noted her resume contributed to the recommendation of sound policies and processes directed toward program improvement. When she left, we were missing 23 of 24 required TEA policies for special education. And I listed more, and I sent you all the email with all the evidence as well. The long-lasting negative impact Mrs. Bloodworth had on our family is substantial to shape the mom I have become. I'm so sorry to these families that I did not advocate sooner and that I didn't come here before. So I'm just asking that you guys look at this, because this has ruined our life, and we've had to work so hard to get back, and now it's happening again. It's systemic. Thank you.
Good evening, President Collins and trustees. My name is Ben Mahan, and I'm in third grade. My older brother is Jackson. Being the brother to a person with Down syndrome can be challenging, but it's not because of the disability. Instead, it's because of the people do not always give people disabilities a chance. My kindergarten year of school, Jackson's fashion was across the hall from mine. Under the leadership of Mrs. Bloodworth, my brother was removed from his classroom and expected to earn his way back to the general education classroom. If Mrs. Bloodworth had provided the right supports and training as a leader, she would have not delayed Jax becoming the student he is now. Jax is known by everyone in the school and is greeted with high fives and hugs. Our team at school works together to make sure Jax is successful with appropriate peer models in the general education classroom. If people with Down syndrome are in a separate class, how will they be able to own it with us, live independently or with a sibling, and have a life of choice? A person in a school that is in charge of people with disabilities should have an inclusive mindset. Otherwise, they should not have such big roles in their lives. I will leave you with my favorite word, integrity. This means doing the right thing even when no one is watching. In this situation, this simply means employing leaders who give people with disabilities an opportunity to be with their peers so they can be the best versions of themselves. There is not a self-contained field or world for people like my brother and Annie. Thank you very much.
Lacey Russell.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Lacey Russell. I am here tonight to address ongoing challenges and delays that I faced regarding the memorial fund created in my daughter's honor, Janice Russell, in February of 2024, who was in an adult transition classroom at Alito High School. This fund was established with a clear and heartfelt intention to support meaningful enriching experiences for the students in the adult transition classroom. These students like Janice are in a unique phase of education, one that focuses not on academics, but on the real-life skills they need to transition into adulthood. For those unfamiliar, the purpose of Adult Transition Classroom in Texas is to help students with disabilities age 18 to 22 acquire independent living skills, job training, functional academics, and community engagement experiences. Their individualized education programs, or IEPs, include goals related to communication, self-advocacy, vocational training, personal safety, cooking, budgeting, and more, all with the aim of promoting independence, dignity, and a life beyond the classroom. Since November of 2024, Margaret Bloodworth, the special education director, and I have had multiple phone calls, sent numerous emails, and even participated in a face-to-face meeting to clarify how I would like these funds to be used. The consistent pushback I've received from Margaret is that my suggested uses do not meet IEP goals. Yet after all of this, two purchase orders were finally approved in March, two and a half weeks after our in-person meeting and more than four months after my original request. One of those purchases, ingredients for cookies the students were baking, not for themselves, not for community building, but were given to the staff members at the Special Education Department meeting. Let me be very clear. I did not create a memorial fund for my daughter to buy cookie dough for a department meeting. I created it to give these students moments of joy, dignity, and real-world engagement, things that are, in fact, directly aligned with their adult transition IEP goals. Instead of support, Margaret offered symbolic suggestions like purchasing a bench outside of the high school, there's six already in the front, or paying for letterman's jackets for the Special Olympics students. These ideas, while well-meaning, are not what this fund is for. This fund was not created for decoration or public relations optics. It was created to invest in these students' lives in ways that reflect who Janice was, vibrant, bright, and full of potential. The Adult Transition Program is about helping students become active members of their communities, and denying them resources based on a narrow interpretation of IEP alignment does them a deep disservice with funds that were donated from friends and family of my daughter, not taxpayer dollars. I'm asking again for the Board of Administration to honor both the intent of this fund, the spirit of the program, and what it's meant to support. Let's stop this department from unnecessary obstacles to start building opportunities for Janice's legacy. Thank you.
Dr. Dana Bear of Frisco.
Hi, my name is Donna Bear, and I came here to support the students of Frisco, I mean, of Alito. I came here, you know, because I heard tonight that you were celebrating your children today, you know, including those of the Special Olympics. You know, I'm talking to the board, and I thank you for the trustees and everything, you know. Tonight, you are asking for early registration for all of the children, you know. But the children with disabilities are being told to bus outside, you know, where they're living, you know. You know, to go to, they chose their homes that they're living in. You had several people testify to that, you know. Some of the prime reasons that they moved to Alito, you know, they select their homes or, you know, the schools, the school districts and everything. Alito's already spent, you know, about 1.2 million, yeah, less that I know of, on, you know, these lawsuits, you know, regarding the special needs of the disability students. You know, a lot of these parents, you know, may spend, you know, $100,000 or more on uncovered medical needs for these children. You know, the board's planning to ask for, you know, IQ testing of these children. You know, are you IQ testing all of the students in Alito? Is that part of your curriculum? You know, if so, I'd like to know, what are the specific IQs of all of the board members? Have you been IQ tested before? You know, that's a legitimate question, you know, because you're saying, you know, many of these children already have ICD-9 codes, or, you know, we already know their specific, you know, disabilities, you know, whether they're autistic, whether they have Down syndromes, whether they have brain injuries. Several of the children that may need accommodations, you know, may have motor vehicle accidents, may have, you know, cancer. They may just have family members that are out for prolonged times. You know, but Texas has set forth precedent about zero cost for children's with such accommodations. You know, I am a survivor and have had zero, the state of Texas do zero cost for education. So that is something I want the Alito to talk about. You know, this is something that will come up next in the next rulings, is that we're gonna challenge Alito about zero cost for education, not just the $10,000 that was come, but, you know, now it's gonna come before the board and everything, that I was awarded a zero cost for my education. I'm a doctor for 35 years, more than 35 years now, I guess it is, and everything that, part of my education was done at zero cost from the state of Texas, so. Sorry, I voted on my three minutes.